Thank you, sir. Everybody please rise. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state, the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now, we'll say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance, flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Milonazzo.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. I believe we have a moment of silence. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docan Chamber for Anna Sophia Azlanian. First born of four children and being the only girl was the light of her parents Joshua and Aitea's lives. Anna was a sixteen-year-old sophomore at Lowell High School and loved sports. She had been a member of the junior varsity field hockey team but loved her dance class and shows. Anna looked forward going to her papu, Nick, to DJ parties and was his little assistant because she was very good at selecting songs to be played and loved being with her papu. Anna loved her years at Sunday School with Father Ernest Caloris and his wife Presby Tara Helene, whom became part of her family. Anna leaves behind her loving parents Joshua and Aitea, her three younger brothers Luke, twin brothers Michael and Patrick, to whom she leaves all her pets and their care. She leaves behind her grandparents, her papu and yaya Nicholas and Carney Diamondopolis, uncles, aunts, godmother and godfather. To all Anna's friends, please don't ever forget her. To her parents, family, relatives, and friends, we offer our sympathy and please know we will never forget her. I'd like to also offer a moment of silence in Docan Chamber for all those who have passed away since our last meeting. We offer our condolences as well. Thank you.
Doc in the chambers. Next, we have the acceptance of the minutes. The minutes of the Finance Subcommittee joint with School Committee Finance Subcommittee for October 30th and the City Council meeting October 30th for acceptance. Any motion to accept and place and file by Counselor Elliott and second by Counselor Kennedy. Next, we have Communication with the City Manager. First is Ellis Avenue, and this was motion by Leahy and Elliott. Counselor Leahy?
Sure, thank you. Through you to the manager. Could Mr. Slagel come up and?
Yes, he is here, counselor.
So, I read the report, but can you explain forty, fifty-six, fifty-five, sixty-one Ellis again? It's two single, it was two single families, right? But because it's a-
No, it was a single, was a single family. The property owner owned a, an adjacent property-
Right.
-that was not large enough to individually put a single family on. However, the two properties together were enough square footage to put a two-family structure. So what is constructed on the site is a two-family structure.
All right. Because, I mean, it looks like two houses connected by a breezeway, right?
Yes, and, and, but, but the, the nature of the structure, because it's an attached structure, is governed by the State Building Code, it's not anything that we have jurisdiction over locally, is one structure. And so the fact that it's a single structure with two units in it makes it a two-family for, for our zoning purposes.
All right. It just, was that the spirit of the, of the law, though? I mean, to have two str- like, you would think traditionally it'd be one structure, right? So this is kind of a roundabout way?
Certainly, most side-by-side two families share an adjoining wall in between the duplex sides. This is a duplex that is, doesn't share an adjoining wall, it has a connecting hallway, connecting piece of the structure. I'm, I'm not here to argue for the aesthetics of the structure.
No, I know.
I'm just letting you know that under the building code, it counts as a structure because of the way it's constructed. It was reviewed by the, by the Building Commissioner at the time the application came in, was reviewed by the planning staff. Because it's a single structure, it has two units in a single structure and therefore is a two-family.
All right. That, that, when we, we're gonna have a subcommittee on that, we can review that. Because, I mean, it just really doesn't, I just don't get it because it's connected. I know. So I'm not gonna argue with you about it, I'm just saying it doesn't look right.
And, and again, just to make it clear, this is a State Building Code issue. It's not a local ordinance that's allowing something like this.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Elliott?
Could, could you just explain, Mr. Slagel? The project was reviewed, so a duplex is allowed by right? I'm just kinda following up on what you said. Under the State Building Code, what's, what difference is between the State Building Code and our bill, building, our local ordinances?
So, in Massachusetts, the State Building Code is what governs the construction of structures. We don't, municipalities don't have the authority to alter it. It is governed at the state level. They have covered the field in that, and we, we can't, we can't have separate building codes. We have a zoning ordinance which talks about uses that are allowed in particular districts, and this district is a traditional two-family district. So it's not a single-family district. It is a two-family district where two families are allowed by right if you have sufficient square footage. And in this district, that means 4,000 square feet per unit. So in an eighty, 300 approximately square foot lot, you can build a two-family structure. They could build a, one on top of the other two-family structure, they could build a traditional duplex, or because it's connected and it doesn't get too close to the sideyard setbacks, they could build a connected duplex like they did.
So, we can set setbacks?
Absolutely.
We can set up zones? We can set up conditional requirements of, of building? But the terms of a two-family, a one-family are designated by the State Building Code?
What constitutes an individual structure is governed by the State Building Code, and that's, that, when we talk about structures, we can't, we, we as a, as a municipality can't say that something is a structure different from what the State Building Code says is a structure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Counselor.
Counselor Milonazzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The zoning subcommittee is meeting next Tuesday at 5:30, and we're gonna be talking about the number of unrelated people that can live in a unit. And I'm sure we'll have members of the citywide neighborhood council as well as the Pawtucket Citizens Council there. It's a topic that we all, as a council, are very concerned about, but I'm gonna ask my colleagues a question. It's really kinda rhetorical, but what does this towns of Dover, Weston, North Andover, Chemsford, and Dunstable all have in common? They all have people that live in those towns that own property on Ellis Avenue. So we can see exactly what's happening over at Ellis Avenue. The investors are coming in from these towns, these very well-to-do towns, in my opinion, and buying a property and converting it to student housing. So that's something we, as a zoning subcommittee and as a, as a city council, really do need to deal with. So again, we're meeting next, next Tuesday at 5:30, and we really need to put in place protection for the, you know, for the people that live in that immediate neighborhood, but really across, across the city. You just have to go on the city's website and look at the addresses of the people that own these homes, and they're not Lowellians, you know? So again, I wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, we have the welcome to Lowell signs. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I asked for a sign entering Lowell, you see them all over the place, entering Westford, entering Pepperell. There was one on Middlesex Street, the outer Middlesex Street area where you were about to approach Chemsford. And I'm making this motion for a person that lives in Chemsford. That's why I made this motion, because I guess there was some work being done there and the sign was taken down, and it was taken down anyway because it wasn't at the right location. I don't know this, I'm only going by what the person in Chemsford told me, who has a lot of ties in Lowell, and you know, I try to do what I can to help people. So when I said that, I don't know if they misunderstood that I wanted a great big sign that says "Welcome to Lowell" for $4,000. I didn't mean something like that. I meant the $290 sign that would be, as you would see it, in any given area that separates and intertwines one town to another. I don't know what the big thing is, and I thought for, for all this time, it should've already been put up there. I made this motion quite a long time ago. The second part of this motion, which I don't know where this came from, it says move the sign on Andover Street to the other side of the road. That's not mine.
No, that wasn't yours. I think Counselor Milonazzo had asked it, and I, I saw that, that wasn't part of your motion.
Okay. But I did have a motion similar to "Welcome to Lowell," and that's probably where the confusion comes in. Someone asked me a question, I don't even remember who, but if you go down on Central Street and you're coming to the downtown and there's this island that separates both sides of, of Central Street, right where Green Street is, Middlesex Street, and, or Appleton Street, right on the corner in the middle of the island-
The island.
-the Volk School actually made a beautiful sign, "Welcome to Lowell." Somehow, it was hit by a car, it was removed and brought somewhere, and nobody knows where it is.
Okay, we'll look into that. I know which one you're talking about.
Yes, it was a beauty.
Yeah, almost carved?
Yes, carved.
Yeah.
And the Volk made it. They did a great job, and so-
I didn't know that.
-someone asked me the question. I have no answer, and why is it not back there? But I, we'd put it back there if we knew where it was, so nobody seems to know where it is. But the other one on Middlesex Street is simply a sign. I don't, I thought it was a state road, but evidently if it isn't-
Yeah, they told us it wasn't, it would be up to us to put it up, so those are the options.
It's only a black and white sign that says "Entering Lowell." We'll do-
We'll do the cheaper one.
The cheaper one's fine. I don't have a problem at all. Thank you so much. That's just the gist of it.
Yes, Counselor Elliott?
This is somewhat, I mean, it's not related to this motion, but it's related to signs. Rather than file a motion, can, can we get an update? I had filed a motion a while ago regarding the three metal structures on Middlesex Street. They're, they're old signs from Ace Muffler, and my motion was to have them taken down, but the recommendation was to use them to advertise recycling information. I go by there all the time, they're just, you know, they're old, they're broken, and either we're gonna use them or it'd be nice to clean up that, that area.
Back to you on that. I think, I think Gunther did mention something about repurposing those, but we'll, we'll see what's going on with that.
Recycle the signs, makes sense.
All set. Next, we have speed bumps. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. Is anybody here to speak on these?
Natasha is here, and actually, the city engineer is here. This is, this, by the way, is kind of a two-part. The, the traffic engineer and the city engineer will look going forward at other, at school locations, but this is just giving background.
Okay.
So.
All right.
But Natasha's here.
Okay, thank you. So, when you, are these costs like approximate costs that you gave us that time?
Yes, mhm.
All right. Because it's gotta be twenty, twenty or twenty-two feet wide, and it's about three and a half inches high?
Right, it'll, and it would depend on the width of the road, at, you know, whatever that location is. This is just a ballpark figure, just to give you an idea of how much it would be if it was asphalt or concrete.
All right. And is that subbing it out, or do we have, can we do that in-house?
We, we joint had a joint response.
I think in terms of design, depending on the location, that is something that we could probably do in-house, as long as it was relative, I mean, looking at one or two locations. But in terms of the costs to, the construction costs, I don't think we could do that in-house.
Okay. What do you mean by that, though? Like, is there more to it than just tape, you know?
Well, yeah, because of the drainage aspect, so, you know, because-
Why do you have to drain? Oh, because a lot of-
Well, because you could create a, it would depend, you know? It might be a situation where we have catch basins on either side, and it wouldn't cause a drainage problem, but if we were to add a speed bump in the center of a road, we could be interrupting flow, so we might have to add a catch basin and connect it underneath. And, you know, if, if there's, if it's relatively simple and small and there's an existing system we could connect to, that would be pretty simple. But, and that's sort of the, that's the one, that's the kind of determining factor, that's what would make it more expensive. I think-
Right.
-it's fairly affordable to put in an asphalt speed bump, but-
Okay. Have you taken a look at, like, say, the Robinson School and how many they might need over there?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at a couple different places. There's also a, a grant application process that Mast dot just kind of informed us about that's about safe routes to school. And they haven't opened up, they haven't given us definitively how they're gonna grade the grant, and it's gonna be, open up sometime in November and have 45 days. But we do have six schools in Lowell that are part of the Safe Routes to School program, and this would be exactly the kind of project they would be looking to fund, like, or adding, you know, flash, some of the flashing beacons at various crosswalks, things like that. So that's something we can look at, for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Just one, Madam Manager, just one question. All of us received a memo from the head of LTC regarding possible FCC changes regarding PEG funding. Could you just, so keep, give us an update and then look at what we have to do?
Yeah, we, we received a memo from LTC, and actually, Maran Fernandez is also preparing, has prepared a memo and research. So we'll get your report on what, what the changes are by the FCC, as well as what potential impacts there are in terms of PEG funding for the city. But we will get that to you next week, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that those changes are across the board. Every community's involved in, with the same thing and dealing with the same thing. So it might make sense as a strategy to join with those other communities, maybe if we're going to take some sort of, or try to take some sort of action.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll get back on, on that, not just the changes, but what, what are our options and potential lines of action. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place and file by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Cirillo. Thank you. Next, we have Communication, accept the resignation of William D. Sheehan from Council on Aging. I need a motion to accept and place and file by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Noon. Next, we have Votes from the City Manager. Vote to accept the gift of 7,500 from Digital Federal Credit Union for the Paulette Library. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager behalf of the City of Lowell to accept the gift of $7,500 for use of the City Lowell Paulette Memorial Library. I need a motion to adopt by Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Cirillo. Roll call.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Okay. Next, orders from the City Manager. We have the order of taking 75 Arcane Drive, waive the full reading, second reading by title, to take by eminent domain a certain parcel of land in the City of Lowell for municipal purposes, namely 75 Arcane Drive Lowell, Mass., to serve as the site of the new high school and other municipal purposes associated therewithin. I need a motion to adopt- So moved. -by Counselor Milonazzo, second by Counselor Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
No.
Counselor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Seven years.
Thank you. Next, we have reports, Subcommittee, if any, any reports of any Subcommittee meeting? No. Then we have a petition, claim of property damage. I need a motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation- So moved. -by Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Kennedy. Next, we have City Council motions. First motion by Counselor Conway, request City Manager and Superintendent Police develop an inclusive plan and strategies that will address and help solve the violence in the city, in particular, the recent shootings. Second by Counselor Cirillo. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, sorry I have to put this motion on, but I think that, yeah, I, I know I've received a number of calls with a concern, obviously, because I think in the last, in the last few months, it, it's, it seems to be on a, on a fairly regular basis, and I think that as, you know, people I've talked with, they have their own slant on it. You know, the business side, they talk about, you know, how do we get business to, to come into Lowell? How do we get them to stay here in Lowell? You know, younger people, they're talking about the educational system, whether they want to keep the roots in Lowell or go someplace else. So I think it's important that we take a look at it, and I know that the police department has been doing so very much, there's no doubt about it, and they do a great job. But I think sometimes what we have to do is step back and take a look and, and say, you know, what are the best practices? Would there be anything in there that, that might help us out that we're overlooking? And going back to January 23rd, I put a motion on to reinstitute the Safety Task Force, and I think that might be something that we should take a look at again, because, again, it was a combination of the schools, it was a combination of, you know, the police from the drug units, from the weapons, courts, DYS, guidance, SROs, and so forth. And I think all the, all the players were at that table, not necessarily at, at every meeting, but certainly, I think it was, as, as people have said to me that were sat on it, said it wasn't just an exchange of ideas, but it was also an, an exchange of information, which I think was extremely important. And looking at things right now, that might be what we're, we might wanna take a look at, is, is see if we can, you know, we can stop things before they actually happen. Somebody mentioned something to me, and I don't know anything about it, actually, but I think it might be something that we take a look at. The ATF, apparently a couple years ago, there was a, some type of a task group that was from surrounding towns, and I think we participated in that. And I think, again, I've only got a little snippet of it, but I think it might be important to take a look at that, because what we would do, the impression that I got, we would have somebody on loan to this group. And then what would happen is, because we had that person on loan, you know, when we need the resources, additional resources, for example, drugs, if, if drugs are in a certain area, or weapons, whatever, they could bring that task force in, which would apparently amount to maybe ten, or twelve, or fourteen people at once. So once again, I think it was a great way to, to share resources and be able to, able to bring in a group of, a group of, of officers of different backgrounds that can help out when we run into some major problems. So, again, things like that, and I would hope that, you know, we take a look at what's best practices are, and also, one last thing, too, is that, and I know everyone here, all the councilors, obviously, and, and City Manager and staff, they wanna do, they wanna make the city as, as, as safe as possible. So if, if there's any way, and we've talked about this before, if there's any way that we can help out by either equipment or supplies, or whatever it may be, I think certainly we'd be there to, to, to help that situation. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? Counselor Elliott, then Counselor Cirillo.
I think Counselor Cirillo was first.
Hi, yes. I, I support Counselor Conway's motion, and what comes to mind automatically is what happened on Halloween in Centerville. I, one of the most fun and exciting nights for children in the city, or in any city, and, and then there's this disregard for it, and, and we end up with what happened. And so, so I, I think that this is very important. I think we need to look into it. I know that crime has gone down in Centerville, but still, something like this should not happen. It should not happen. And so, so I support Counselor Conway's efforts in this motion completely. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, then Counselor Mercia.
I, you know, I, we need to reassure the residents, certainly in that neighborhood and the city, that we are doing all that we can. But on Halloween night, I think it struck a note with all of us that we have thousands of children out in the city, and we have gunshots, lots of gunshots going off at that particular point in time. Not that it's any better at any other point in time, but the magnitude of the number of kids that were out. And having attend the meeting, the, the neighborhood meeting on Sunday, it was, it was good to hear the chief explain what he's doing. Yes, crime is down in Centerville, we did receive a comstat report, but there's still a lot of crime. And, you know, questions were asked in particular about the, you know, what is, what is behind this? And again, it's the gangs, and it's the drugs. It's not back in the eighties where it was turf war, it's all about drugs. So I was at least pleased to hear, and I want folks to know, that we do have a gang unit. He is going to be, he is going to increase the numbers because the gangs are related to the drugs, and the drugs, and he's also increasing the vice unit. He's using a different strategy. He's gonna put these gang, the gang unit in, in uniforms, so they're not gonna get confused, because we do have Southeast Asian, Southeast Asian members of the gang unit who are, who are working with it. So I think that is positive, but it, it's the drugs. It's, it's past time for us to put a, you know, a full frontal assault on these drugs and, and the gangs, and it's, people should know that it's coming. He is reorganizing, he told that he's gonna reorganize the department, he's taking resources from other, you know, from other units, if you will, and also increasing, we're down nine officers, that, that is coming up, and people at home should know. It's, we're having difficulty getting good police officers, getting them into the academy, getting transfers, because it's not the most desirable job these days. So I just thought it was important to bring forward that meeting on Sunday with, with neighbors, and there's also one on Friday. And those are the takeaways that I got, that, and again, it's, it's 10%, according to the chief. 10% of the, these, these perpetrators that are causing most, and they, and they know who they are, and they're after them, but they're, they're, they're repeat offenders. And he also did say, one, I'd just like to mention one last thing, the new judge, and I don't know her name, the new judge in the district-
Judge Forst.
Judge Forst. She is no-nonsense, and they literally bring a bucket of handcuffs during, during arraignment, and I, you know, that's a good thing. So I think that's positive for the police department, that it's not a revolving door. for the Police Department, that it's not a revolving door. So I just wanted to add that to the motion. I think it makes sense. And, and everybody knows this, and we're trying to make the city safe, but it's, it's clearly, it, it's the drugs that, and he's met with DEA, the chief, the new chief has met with DEA and all of our partners, and we're going to see some progress. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's not much more that I could add to Councilor Elliott's synopsis of the event that took place. But I want people to know that, listening, that Kelly Richardson, our Superintendent of Police, is right on top of the issue, as is the police in that particular neighborhood as well. Every available incident that they see, they're right on top of it. It's quite evident when they met with the neighborhood group on Friday. I was not able to be there at 1:00. I have to work. But I was there on Sunday, and he went through the whole spiel. People were there. Councilor Elliott hit the nail right on the head, said everything that was there. So please know that the chief is right on top of this issue. They did confiscate a car. They do have a person that's a suspect. They know who the people are, and they're, they're going to work with the neighborhood group. So it was just a great meeting, and I just wanted to reiterate that. But great job, Councilor Elliott.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah, I just would want to add the, I was able to attend both meetings. And I think that this, that incident which took place in West Centerville, that could have happened in several other neighborhoods within the city, in any other neighborhood within the city for that matter. But it happened there. And I think that what I was impressed with at both meetings was the number of superior officers that were there. And with, within a week, less than a week of, of that incident taking place, there were two meetings in the neighborhood regarding that incident and what was going to be done about it. And I think that, that everybody, not just the, the neighbors in West Centerville, but throughout the city, should, should be impressed that, that the Police Department has jumped on this and will do everything that they can to make sure that there's not a repeat incident. You know, incidents like this, when they happen, it's very difficult. It's, you know, it could happen next Halloween. It could happen anywhere, in any community. But I do think that, that everybody should be impressed with the response from the Police Department and, and take, take some comfort in the fact that the Police Department in Lowell is, is doing everything they can to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And that the City Manager, too, was at the meeting on, that we had on Sunday, as, as were you, Mr. Mayor. The, the Friday meeting was a little bit, was difficult for people to, to attend. And also, too, the Friday meeting was held in the rain. So, so it was, it was rather brief, but still went on for about 30 or 40 minutes. But those superior officers that were there, and there were several of them, the chief was not at the Friday meeting, but was at the Sunday meeting. But they, they stayed there as long, until the residents were satisfied with everything that they had to say. So I just think that should be added to it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Like, Council, I'm sorry, Manager?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to, you know, address the council in, in the audience, Chief Richardson and his entire command staff, obviously, has taken this very seriously, and as the council has said, is marshalling all the efforts to address this. And, and this message should be heard loud and clear, not just by the, the residents, but by these gang members, to understand that this behavior is not going to be tolerated. And in conversations since Sunday with the chief, they are all in and on, on this matter. These are ongoing investigations, very active investigations, and that's all I'll comment on at this point. But, but rest assured, this is not being taken lightly whatsoever by, by the police or by anybody in the Police Department.
Councilor Elliott?
Can I just add one more thing, which I thought was important? There were, just for the people, for the public, there were 20 police, additional police officers that were put on Halloween, knowing there were so many-
Correct.
-individuals out. And I think it's important to know that we are trying, we, we are proactive. There were 20 on, and so when officers are called somewhere else, those, there were officers in each of the neighborhoods. So I, I know it's, it's just a piece of information that I, I thought was important for people to know.
I'd just like to add, I think we set a record for the number of children that were out in the street, I mean, in the various neighborhoods. I mean, really, I mean, it speaks to how, I think, how people perceive Lowell as being a safe place, because there were so many children. And that's a good thing. Madam Manager?
Just as an aside, on Halloween, I just want to comment. I know at my house, we had close to 900 trick-or-treaters. And we were overwhelmed at how, how great it went, and how the trick-or-treaters, both big and, and small, were all so terrific and polite. And I've heard from people all across the city who had the same thing to say, whether it was the Highlands, whether it was Christian Hill, you know, whatever part of the city who had a lot of trick-or-treaters. And there were many, that everybody was well behaved, there were no problems. And that's why it is doubly unfortunate that something like this would have happened that night. But I, I did want to say that the police were out, they were patrolling throughout the city, and they did a very good job as well.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Councilor Leahy, request City Manager, along with Engineering Department, get an explanation from National Grid regarding various repairs being done throughout the city. Seconded by Councilor Mercia. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. I know we spoke on this, so I just want to put the motion in. So in one particular incident, when they were up on Pawtucket Ave, and they seemed to be, National Grid seemed to have one of their subcontract, subcontractors up there maybe two, three times. I think they eventually fixed this grade-two leak a couple of days ago. But the point is, you know, they're up there at night, it's after 8:00 at night, they're knocking on doors, asking to get into the basement. There's no, a National Grid truck out there, there's not a policeman out there. So people don't know if it's real, if it's not real. And then, you know, I guess they were up there digging the street up, and they fixed it. But like, now it's getting to the point where it's confusing, you know? They were telling us that grade-twos, you can watch them. So apparently, this went to a grade-one or something, but. And then the other thing in that neighborhood, too, where we replaced a lot of the, the lines this year, they started paving some of the streets, making the, the cuts, and they repaved them, maybe double the size. But they kind of stopped. So I didn't know if they're going to continue, because they went up Loose Street, they went up Butman Road. So are they done for the season, or...
I think they're still out there.
Well, I saw them on Nesmith Street, but they stopped in the neighborhood, like, around Loose and Butman Road. And they still have connect, they still have roadwork to do up there.
The City Engineer may be able to address this.
Sure.
Sure. So Nesmith Street was last week-
Yeah.
-and that was night work. As far as Butler and Loose-
Butman and Loose, they did the bottom halves, but they didn't do the top half. They cut that all up, and that's still in bad shape.
I'll check on that. I know there were some streets that they didn't finish services, and so they're, and they're not able to finish those. So that's something that they'd be finishing in the spring. But in areas where they did finish services and main, then they would do replacement. But I can check on Butman and, and Loose.
Okay. And I know I'm being a stickler on this, but they did a nice job paving. Are they going to come back and hot-seal the edges like they do in some towns? Can you check on that?
We can check on that. Usually, we only do like the infrared sealing. If it's, they're connecting into new, new pavement. So if it's older pavement, it doesn't have as great of a seal. But in terms of maybe a rubberized joint, we can, we can look at that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So if we can just find out with them, and they need to have better procedures, and hopefully, this lockout is going to end soon, because this is just disturbing to all the neighborhoods. It's just disruptive. So hopefully, that lockout ends. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Councilor Mercia, request City Manager to look into the need of replacing the seniors' center bus.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Leahy. Thank you. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nine years ago, we got a brand-new bus for our seniors to be able to go on trips. It was a 38-passenger bus, and throughout the years, the Friends of the Council on Aging, we registered it, we repaired it, we maintained it, and we kept up with every cost associated with the good care of this bus. At the time, Congressman Mahdi Mian gave us a grant for $75,000 from the Transportation Bond Bill, and then donations came in to the tune of about $25,000, and leaving the rest for us to pick up. So the friends picked up and paid the $38,000 for the rest of the bus, some amount to that, about that price. But we're facing the same dilemma again. And when I say that, I'm kind of like begging, because this is what happened so far. That, that bus has broken down six times, in April, June, July, September, twice in October. And when the, they, they schedule these trips, and when they do, they, they can't use the bus, so they hire a coach bus. So if I could just give you the, and then they have to return the money. So the, the $5 trips, and they had to give the money back, they lost $1,080 by giving the money back. The loss of the bus trips was $4,800. We rented buses from September 18th to October 22nd. There were three rentals, that was $3,750. The total loss of everything combined was $9,630. The Friends of the Council on Aging paid that so that the seniors could get on and go on their, their bus. We do have a Fund the Bus campaign going on now, and I'm waiting for the next Congressperson to be put in office, so I could-
That'll be tonight.
Yes, I know. I couldn't wait, because I'm going to be begging for some money from the Transportation Bond Bill. But we're really in a bad situation here. That's just a little bit of it. So the seniors are the ones who should be treated a little bit better than this. I know that it's nobody's fault, but seniors deserve to have some fun in the twilight of the years. They look forward to these trips. Some people don't have a family, and they look forward to this. So I'm just so sad, and, and I'm appealing to the public, if anybody is watching, rather than out to vote or whatever, or they're home. We're having a campaign, and I'm going to go on the radio, and I'm going to talk about this with Michelle Romallo, if you give her permission to go. If anybody wants to donate to the Friends of the Council on Aging, that we've already collected, we're almost to the $1,000. We're just starting this. We're going to have another campaign. I know that you think that it's only nine years old, but a bus really travels, and it's, the life expectancy of the bus is about 10 years, plus the fact we probably bought a lemon. I really, we spent a heck of a lot of money, and it's been sitting there. And it, and picture the seniors going to like Rhode Island, and they're stuck on a highway, and they have to be towed back. And it's very life-shattering when you're stuck on a highway, and you're wondering, are we going to get hit here? Are we going to get killed? I don't really feel it's how we treat our seniors, but I'm, I'm appealing to, and I know that we could put this on the five-year capital, capital plan, but then I can't wait for five years for a bus when they should be going different places. So I'm, I'm sad about it, and I'm trying to alert, to see if we could just help us to do something. It's not like we're not paying our fair share. We are. We probably could buy the bus outright, but we'd be broke. And we try to spend at least $25,000 to $30,000 a year with the money that we make with the Friends of the Council on Aging. So I'm just appealing, Madam Manager, if we could see what we could do for our seniors. And, and we will help, too. We're going to have a campaign to raise some money as well, so.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
I'm just going to ask, how much is the new bus, or a bus?
Well, that one was over $100,000.
Yeah, it was like $145,000.
And part of that was funded through a federal grant?
Well, $75,000-
Do we know how much it was? Seventy-five?
From the Transportation Bond Bill, for federal government money.
Madam Manager?
We will look into this, Counselor. I know myself, after being on that bus this summer, when it was 98 degrees and breaking down on Central Street, and only had to walk back to City Hall, but I could only imagine what it must be like for seniors. And I heard they had been on a trip to Rhode Island when the bus broke down.
And we had the LRTA and their kindness come after us.
They came and-
But we had to pay, we have to pay.
Right.
So we don't take anything for free. We-
I thought you might have been in the conference room, because during lunch one day, we had the CFO researching, how much is a bus?
Yeah, we don't even-
We didn't come up with anything cheap, but we were looking.
Oh, I know. And we wouldn't probably look for a 38-passenger, even if we had a 32 or whatever.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll talk to the council and, and look into this.
Thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
I was just want to follow up. Is it, one, it's in the capital plan for, for when? Next year, this year? Or is it in the capital plan?
I don't think specifically it's in there right now, Counselor.
Okay.
It's something we would look to.
Another need that we have. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Announcements? Do we have any announcements? Madam Manager?
Briefly, we did put on the Counselor's desk tonight, the open space, a draft of the open space plan. This is for your review. There'll be a presentation next week at the council meeting by Christine McCall, and Giovanni will, will make a presentation. But it is going to be public tomorrow online for public comment for 45 days, or 30 days. But we wanted the council to have it ahead of time. So any questions, comments, additions? This is a draft, but we will have a presentation next week. We just wanted you to have it before it went online tomorrow.
Thank you. We have 45 minutes to vote. Motion to adjourn. Councilor Kennedy, seconded by Councilor Cirillo. Thank you.